All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Elena Campbell, President of the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce. We're so excited to welcome you this morning to our Candidates Forum for the two candidates that are running for the 11th District for the Oakland County Commission. We all know this is a big election year. There are many, many things that are going on, many issues that we're all dealing with, that we've been dealing with particularly in the last seven months. So it's more important than ever that we be informed. One of the things I do want to remind everyone of is that the Rochester Regional Chamber does not endorse candidates. So what our job, though, is, is to help inform you, our members, to provide you with opportunities to meet the candidates and get to know the candidates and ask them questions. So that's what we're doing here today. And it is my pleasure right now to introduce the Chair of our Board of Directors and also the Chair, this year, of our Legislative Affairs Committee, John Young, Vice President of Marketing and Communications at Oakland University.
Thanks, Elena. I want to welcome everyone and especially thank the two candidates for joining us today. We appreciate you taking time out of your day, your busy day in the campaign season to join us and answer some questions and also provide information. You know, sometimes the county offices are forgotten in the mix of all the national things going on or some of the other more highly visible. But on a day-to-day basis, the county does a tremendous amount and the officials elected to lead that effort are critical to our day-to-day lives. So thank you first for being here. Thank you both for your willingness to serve. I'm going to give it back to you, Elena, so we can get to the questions.
Awesome. Thank you so much, John. John and I joke all the time about how little he knew he was going to be taking on this year.
Yeah, somehow Julie didn't pass this on in the debriefing last December.
Judge Julie Nicholson was our Chair last year. So yeah, she forgot to tell you what 2020 had in store, didn't she?
She did, yep.
Anyway, John's been amazing. I can't even tell you, I know how much he's dealing with, you know, at Oakland University and in his personal life as well, like so many of us. And we have appreciated his leadership so much. He has really stepped up. He's in communication with me all the time. And every time I call him or text him, he's available. So I really do appreciate that and thank him for it. So with that, we're going to get started. And first of all, I will reiterate how the format is going to go this morning. So each candidate is going to have five minutes to introduce themselves. And we're going to start with Tom and then Tim. And then if people could please type their questions in the chat box, we will then go to the question portion. And each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. And we will start with Tom and then Tim on the first question, and then we'll flip it. So then for the second question, Tim will answer first and then Tom will answer. Now, who would have guessed we have a Tim and a Tom? I might get confused, you guys, so help me out if I do. There's only, you know, one syllable, one vowel, differentiating your names. Then at 9:50, each candidate will have three minutes for their final remarks, with Tim first and then Tom concluding. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce our current Oakland County Commissioner from District 11, Tom Kuhn.
Thank you, Elena. Hi, I'm Tom Kuhn. I'm honored to serve as your County Commissioner, representing Rochester Hills, Troy, and Auburn Hills. I want to tell you a little bit about my background. I'm a lifelong resident of Oakland County. I've been married for over 25 years to my wife Sherri, who is a retired special education teacher and university lecturer. We have three adult children and four grandchildren. I've been very active providing public service in our community. I served over a decade in youth sports as a volunteer for youth softball, baseball, and soccer.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that. Could you please repeat it?
I have served on many city committees and almost 10 years on my Neighborhood Association Board. I currently serve on Troy Beaumont Hospital's Community Advisory Board and Walsh College's Management Advisory Board. I received Bachelors, Masters, and Doctorate degrees in political science. And I have a law degree. I've been an attorney for 35 years, practicing in our state and federal courts here in southeast Michigan. I've been an elected official for over 26 years in Oakland County, including 12 years on the city government, 12 years on the Oakland Community College Board, plus two years as Oakland Community College Board Chair. As your County Commissioner, I was appointed to the Public Safety Committee, where I work closely with Sheriff Mike Bouchard and his staff. I'm proud to say that after years of Mike Bouchard's efforts to increase funding for the critical training of our police, I helped assure a $1 million commitment for the improved training center the sheriff so desperately needs. Since COVID-19 hit and massively disrupted our communities and economy in March, I've been working hard for you, responding to that crisis. I was appointed by my colleagues on the County Commission as a key member of the Bipartisan Pandemic Response and Economic Recovery Committee. We immediately provided needed resources for our cities, schools, nonprofits, hospitals, and small business owners to fight the catastrophic effects of the virus on our economy and on our community. I serve on the Oversight Committee to help our cities. We allocated $30 million for our cities, $5 million for libraries, senior, and community centers. I've worked closely with our mayors. Mayor Brian Barnett of Rochester Hills, Mayor Ethan Baker of Troy, Mayor Kevin McDaniel of Auburn Hills, to assure that our cities get the funding to deal with the catastrophic impact COVID-19 has had on our businesses and communities. I also serve on the Oversight Committee for Small Business Recovery. I participated in the initial two rounds of small business grants, providing $14 million in April and May. At our urging, the County Commission allocated another $35 million in June for our small businesses that have been closed or required to operate at reduced capacity. In addition, we authorized $10 million grant program for small and medium-sized manufacturing companies. And we allocated $11 million in small business aid through MEDC. As part of the Oversight Committee, we authorized $1.75 million in grants for our 22 Chambers of Commerce in the county, who serve as such a vital link for so many of our businesses, providing critical information and help in our disrupted economy and uncertain times. As with so many of our businesses, our chambers have also been devastated by the loss of revenue and staffing. Finally, I've been working closely with our schools. We've allocated $28 million to help our schools open and operate safely. We've hired 68 new nurses to provide help for our students and teachers. And we have provided free health monitoring for students.
Can you wrap it up, Tom?
What?
Wrap it up.
Oh, yeah, I just have one there. COVID-19 has created a huge crisis for many in our society, but together with my colleagues on the County Commission, have been working to assure a strong bipartisan response to the disruption and uncertainty created by the virus.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Tom. Tom got a few, a little bit more, so we'll give Tim a little bit more as well. And I should have told you, I'll hold up a 1 when you have a minute left and then a 3 0 when you have 30 seconds left.
Make sure you hold the 1 up in front of your face because it blends into the white.
I know, it's going, I know, my background. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Tom. We appreciate it. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Tim Burns.
Well, thank you to the Rochester Chamber for inviting me to address you today. My name's Tim Burns. I'm running for the seat on the County Commission that represents Auburn Hills, Troy, and Rochester Hills. A little bit about myself, I am 47 years old. Will be turning 48 in a few more weeks. And I just recently celebrated my 16th wedding anniversary with my wife Barbara. We have two 11-year-old twins who are supposed to be starting middle school right now, but they are actually homeschooling because of the pandemic. So a real focus of my campaign is getting them back to school. But a little bit of addition to that is that I've been a small business owner myself and an attorney for 20 years. And around 2006, I was serving on the Board of Directors for the Claussen Chamber of Commerce, the Claussen Community Credit Union and the Claussen Troy Optimist Club when I decided to run for County Commission. And I won the seat that represented Troy and Claussen and served on that board for two terms, which was during the Great Recession. And we were able to steer the county through that dilemma without raising taxes and I think doing a pretty good job of looking out for our citizens. After I completed my terms on the County Board, I then served from 2012 to 2016 on the State Bar of Michigan's Board of Commissioners, which has oversight of the legal profession. After I completed that term, I was looking at running for an open judge seat in the District Court for Troy. And I got enough petitions to get on the ballot. And I was preparing to file them when we got a phone call the day before from our family doctor. And we got that call that nobody wants to get. My wife was diagnosed with cancer. So I decided I wasn't going to run. And I spent several years focusing on her care, being a good dad to my kids, and my legal profession. I'm glad to say, knock on wood, that we've been cancer-free now for a little over a year and a half now. Things are looking really good. And it seemed like a good time to get back involved with everything that is going on right now. I understand from my own family's health crisis the importance of helping the public move forward with this current health problem. So that's one of the reasons that I'm running for County Board is that we need to make sure that we have leaders who are fully addressing the situation, taking facts and science advice from professionals and making decisions that are in the best interest of our whole community. I want to be civil in this campaign. I'm so sick of the negative advertising. But I just really need to point out that every single thing that Mr. Kuhn just took credit for funding on the County Board just several days ago, he voted to defund. He voted against the county budget. If his vote had been successful in the midst of this crisis, he would have completed a government shutdown at the Oakland County level and defunded our Health Department. In this time where we see the dysfunction in Washington and we see the dysfunction in Lansing, we can't afford to have that type of politics before people being taken place at the county level. That's why I'm running. I'm running as a concerned dad because I just don't like what I'm seeing. And we need people to step up and make a difference. Making sure we tackle the coronavirus is going to be important. But we're also going to make sure that we are dealing with other important issues, such as fixing our local roads and making sure that we have a safe neighborhoods and good schools for everyone. And there's different ways we can partner with the county to do that. When I was on the County Board, I was a Democrat in a Republican majority, but I still got a lot of things done. I partnered with Sheriff Bouchard and Prosecutor Gorsuch, who were both Republicans at the time, to create a consumer protection initiative that received accolades for what it did to help people. I actually chaired the Public Services Committee for a period of time that Mr. Kuhn serves on now as a Democrat and Republican majority. I had the ability to cross party lines and work together. And at this time, volatility, all the hatred, all the bitterness going on, we need someone who can bridge these gaps in our society and get government doing what it needs to do, which is working for all of us. And when I've seen issues that were of troublesome nature, I stepped in. When I saw some troublesome behavior regarding employment practice with the county, I offered and co-sponsored what's called the E-Verify Policy, which makes sure that contractors are hiring appropriate employees that are legal to work in the United States. That was passed by partisan support and is still the county policy 10 years later. So I have a track record of getting things done and not putting politics in front, but putting people before politics. And that's really why I'm running. You see so many people losing faith in government, and I don't blame them. I mean, we have Macomb County Prosecutor who's been indicted for corruption. We had the Troy City Manager indicted for corruption. And we need good people to stand up and say, you know what? I'm going to put people first. And I see my own kids seeing losing faith in government because they see elected officials acting more like schoolyard bullies and good neighbors. And I just want to roll up my sleeves and make a positive contribution. And I hope I can have your support so we can work together to move Oakland County forward together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim. Okay, so now we go to the question and answer portion. Let me restart my timer here. So the first question that we have. Given the recent Michigan Supreme Court ruling regarding the governor's lack of authority to continue declaring a state of emergency, what do you see as the county's role with regard to limitations on local businesses? So the first person is, I got Tom to answer.
All right, thank you. As Republicans, we are a minority on the County Commission. The Republican Commissioners have repeatedly asked that the county allow our businesses to reopen and operate using safe protocols, starting as early as last April. The Republicans unanimously demanded an end to the county's use of emergency powers back in May. And the county executive finally relented after several extensions were passed on strict party line votes. As soon as the Supreme Court ruled that the governor had no constitutional authority to act unilaterally, the county executive decided to act unilaterally, issued an order to require everyone to wear masks when they leave their homes, and promised many more restrictions. Again, the Republican Caucus opposed this unauthorized use of power. When the governor used the state Health Department to issue mandates, the county dropped its orders. The Commission can clearly limit the unauthorized use of power. But to be effective, it requires a majority. And the current Democratic majority on the Commission votes straight party line on all these issues. To have an effective oversight in the county, we need a Republican majority on the County Commission.
Thank you. Tim, I'll read the question again so that you know. Given the recent Michigan Supreme Court ruling regarding the governor's lack of authority to continue declaring a state of emergency and issue executive orders, what do you see as the county's role with regard to limitations on local businesses?
Right. Well, as Mr. Kuhn's also an attorney, as I am, he knows or should know the Health Code allows the county to have authority to set guidelines for dealing with health crises such as we're facing. And what we really need to focus on is making sure that there's confidence with both consumers and businesses that they know what the rules are and what everyone's doing to be on the same page. With the dysfunction we're seeing both nationally and locally, we need our local government to stand up and set some guidelines so that everybody's on board on the same page, so that we're working to get everyone in a position where we can get businesses open as soon as possible. That means we need to mitigate the spread of the virus. We also need to put businesses in a position where they're not having to tell customers or people that are giving them troubles that, you know, what we're not going to force thing is on individual businesses. That's not fair to a business owner. Also, a business owner needs to know with some assurance what it is they need to operate safely and what they need to do in order to make sure that everything is being complied with so that they can function and be profitable. In order to do that, we need a Health Department that's setting guidelines and working hands-on with the business community to get things open. My law practice shut down for a couple of months because the court shut down. So I understand the pain and confusion small business owners and corporations are having with dealing with this structure. And my biggest grief was that there was no clear guidance on what I needed to do to move forward. So we need to plan together. And to just say the Health Department shouldn't do anything or the Republicans need to be in charge just so they can be the people in power isn't the right answer. We need someone like myself who's worked among the both parties to get things done, not someone who's just whining that they're not in charge. I'm sorry, Mr. Kuhn, but that's just the right way to do things.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. So next question, and Tim gets to answer this one first. The mandated closure, here's my, the mandated closure of businesses for several months and the inability of many businesses to be at full capacity still has greatly impacted our local economy and small business community. If elected, how would you work to ensure that we can get our local businesses back up and running at pre-pandemic levels? So first is Tim.
Well, one of the issues I have again is that, and I said in my last answer, is that we need to have better communications with business owners. And we need to let them know what the plan is and what the criteria are because it's not fair for someone just to say, well, I'll let you know down the road. We all need to be working together to get this done so businesses can help out as well. Businesses, if they're told what they need to do, will do it. And that will get people in the businesses. And we need to follow the rules that are set so that we can minimize the spread and get back to work as soon as possible. I also believe that while I want to get as few people on unemployment insurance as possible, we need to help those people who are having troubles with the system get the benefits and assistance they need so that we can get that cash flow back into the system so that people are spending money helping the Main Street businesses. So then we can again get those people instead of getting unemployment because the businesses are doing better, they're getting hired again, and we get the stimulus actually working for the best interest of our business community. So we need to, when I was on the County Board before, we had counselors that helped people during the housing crisis. We need to have some counselors that can help step in and make sure that people are getting guidance and dealing with that problem and other problems, maybe assistance with where to find benefits, where to find jobs. And I also would like to see the prosecutor's office partner more with the state Attorney Generals to prosecute anyone who may be taking advantage in getting the unemployment benefits illegally.
All right. Thank you very much. So next is Tom, and I'll read the question again. The mandated closure of businesses for several months and the inability of many businesses to still be at full capacity has greatly impacted our local economy and small business community. If elected, how would you work to ensure that we can get our local businesses back up and running at pre-pandemic levels?
We've worked really hard to assure that the county uses its federal funding to provide direct aid to our struggling businesses. After the Commission allocated $14 million in April and May for small business stabilization grants, I, along with my colleague Phil Wiper, proposed a $35 million expansion of small business grants. The county executive agreed, proposing $32 million for small business grants. That dollar figure seems like a big number. Given the huge, huge number of small businesses in our county that have been dramatically impacted by COVID, by closures, by restrictions, that number meant that businesses received grants of no more than $5,000 to $10,000 each. That's not great compensation for having your businesses closed down or severely limited for months and months and months. The real solution is to have a stable policy of allowing businesses to open and operate safely. When the state and county governments open, then close, restrict, then unrestrict businesses, the county, the government is creating a climate of uncertainty that makes business extremely difficult. As we move forward, we need to allow businesses to stay open, operate safely, and not to subject them to arbitrary closures and restrictions.
Thank you. Okay, so next question, we have, and what time is it? Yes, we still have time. So next question, Tom will answer first and then Tim. So what do you see as the most important issues to tackle in 2021 to rebuild the county's economy? So Tom, you're first.
Thank you. First, we need to allow businesses to operate safely without the arbitrary closures and restrictions. This is really the most critical step. We've seen it throughout the country. Those states that have severely limited businesses have the slowest recovery. It's arbitrary, it's capricious. Michigan businesses have to be able to operate, rebuild a strong and healthy post-COVID economy. Second, we need to assure that governments don't excessively tax businesses and residents. New and higher taxes are not the road to economic health. Third, we need to return to the fiscally responsible policies of Elbrooke-Patterson. A fiscally responsible government will ensure essential services are maintained and enhanced, that the county's AAA bond rating is maintained. That bond rating is critical for improving our infrastructure at the best possible rate for our citizens. Infrastructure that includes technology, our drains, our water system, and our roads. Fourth, if the federal government provides more aid, we need to continue to direct it to our businesses who can use it most effectively to grow and restore a healthy economy.
Thank you. All right, Tim, what do you see as the most important issues to tackle in 2021 to rebuild the county's economy?
Well, first of all, it is tackling the pandemic because that's what's really sinking the economy. We were really churning there, and then this hit, and we just fell into this pothole and we got to get ourselves out of it. Now, the best way to do that, and I have to disagree a little bit with Mr. Kuhn, is that I'm not sure if some of these closures have been quote arbitrary, but I think that I agree with him on the point that there needs to be better communications and expressing why certain decisions are being made. And I do think that there could have been a little more flexibility in regard to opening that up. So I would be an advocate in being involved to make sure that I have an understanding of why some of these decisions are being made and making sure that they are appropriate. But again, our focus needs to be to contain the virus so that we can open up as quickly as possible. And that means we all need to do this together. The X issue is that we need to make sure that people aren't putting politics before the best interest of the county. I will work to provide civility and professionalism in working with anyone to get the job done. But I also will stand toe-to-toe to anyone that puts political power, personal profiteering, or extreme ideology before the best interests of our community. People who would vote against the budget to score political points rather than to actually make a difference are the type of people I will stand up to and one of the reasons I'm running for this election. And I'll be there to make sure that the businesses that are out there have the PPE they need, the personal protection equipment and the guidance so that they can work in cooperation with the county to get back to work, to get their employees back to work, to get back to making money, to get our economy churning. We can do this, but it means not complaining, but working together to have a positive outcome.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, we have time for one final question, and then we will wrap it up. So the last question, Tim answers first and then Tom. And, sorry, my timer's going to go off. The last question, is there an issue currently not on the radar at the county level that you champion if elected? So, Tim, you're first.
You know, from my legal profession, doing a lot of work in the criminal field, I see a lot of resources put into trying to address sobriety and drug addiction. And that is a significant cause of both criminal activity and economic problems in our community. But something that's often not seen as much of a problem but really needs attention is mental health issues. I have a client right now who had a mental psychotic breakdown and killed his father. And when I go to see him at the facility he's at, he asks me every day, why isn't my dad coming to visit me? What could we have done to save that life, both lives, in regards to mental health treatment and intervention? I have another client who can't live in her house because her 50-year-old son moved back in and is expressing that he is Jesus and that he rules the world and he assaults her whenever he comes back in the house. She doesn't know where to go, the resources aren't there. We have homelessness, we have jails being filled up with people with mental health issues. And we just have family people, families who are suffering trying to handle this and care for their loved ones. And I would like to put together a task force to see what can we do? Can we, like, we have sobriety courts, can we do mental health treatment? Can we, like, we have sobriety courts, can we do mental health treatment courts? There are ways we can provide more counseling, there's a way we can improve treatment so these issues I just told you about aren't happening. They may seem like small things just out there, but they have big influences on our economy, our criminal system, and the families that they impact. So I would be an advocate for mental health and trying to see what we can do to improve that system.
Okay, thank you. All right, Tom, is there an issue currently not on the radar at the county level that you champion?
Right now, the only issue on the radar at the county level is COVID nineteen. That is taking up all our time and energies. Assuming that we can overcome the uncertainties and disruptions of COVID nineteen, I would like to work on a couple major ongoing projects that I started the past couple years. The first thing I did when I got on this county commission was request the Special Committee on Invasive Species. The board chair responded by appointing a bipartisan special committee and selected me as the Republican commissioner on that committee. In our district, we have some of the most beautiful neighborhoods and subdivisions in the state. These neighborhoods have maintained a very strong natural environment. To me, it's important to protect these neighborhoods by fighting invasive species that threaten to undermine both the natural environment, home values in our neighborhoods. I was also selected to serve on the county's Public Safety Committee. This allowed me to work closely with Sheriff Mike Bouchard and Under Sheriff Mike McCabe. The number one priority for Sheriff Bouchard is improved training. And that means improved training centers. So Oakland County can continue to have the absolute very best police response anywhere. So I will continue to work hard to make sure the county allocates sufficient funds so that our sheriff and our police have the training facilities they need to best serve our citizens.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you so much to both of you for answering those questions and participating today. You now each get three minutes for your final remarks, and we're going to start with Mr. Burns.
Well, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to meet with you and tell you a little bit about myself. I just wanted to tell you that if I'm elected county commissioner, my focus is going to be tackling this coronavirus. I told you that was the reason I jumped in. And one of the big reasons I did jump in was because when I was on the county board, we dealt with an issue where there was a group of commissioners who were taking advocacy from the anti-vaccination crowd and were trying to get the health department to be banned from distributing vaccines. And I knew as this crisis is going to unfold that the health department is going to take an active role in getting out of this crisis. And vaccinations at some point is going to be an issue that's in front of them. So I want to make sure that politics aren't being before people. We're making people have, people who can make decisions based on science and the best interests of medical doctors are helping guide the department. Also, if elected, I'm going to get back into the community. When I was county commissioner before, I had a monthly television show. I had a program where I would do a community cleanup. I partnered with the Troy Chamber of Commerce. We would do litter along the road commission roads. But that wasn't just for curb appeal. I also had volunteers do quality checks of the county roads. And then I would report back after these cleanups. And I would walk the route myself and see where there were issues. And I interact with the county road commission, and we had some good connections. And we would do that again to make sure that we're looking at trying to do things that we're interacting with the public and having good relationships with the different departments. I still have people from the Troy City Council and Rochester Hill City Council who refer people to me for help on county issues because of the inability of the current county commissioner to deal with that. I'm not even the elected person, I'm helping people out for free. So let me get involved and roll up my sleeves and make a positive difference. It's about being a liaison to the community. It's about listening to experts and making educated decisions. And I will make votes that are not based on politics, but before people. I just find it absurd that someone would vote against funding the health department and shutting, to shut down the county government in the middle of a pandemic. That's our number one responsibility, as is to be in charge of the budget. And I promise you, as someone who's been on the Audit Committee for the State Bar, who's been a county commissioner before, who's served on the Oakland County Parks and the Oakland County Airport Authority, and someone who's been on the Board of Directors for a credit union, I will take that financial responsibility as your fiduciary very seriously. I'd appreciate your support on the November third ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right, Tom, three minutes to wrap up.
Hey, well, thank you. I'd like to thank the Rochester Area Chamber for inviting me and my opponent and providing the public forum for candidates in the general election. I strongly believe in openness and transparency in government. That's why, when the Democratic majority came in the day of our budget meeting, adding four hundred pages, four hundred pages of budget at the last minute, I voted against it. It's outrageous. This is not open, transparent government. This is government by surprise, and it's totally inappropriate. To me, openness and transparency are essential to good government. So the service you are providing here today is really important. When I first ran for county commission, it was open. Because I have extensive experience in government, I wanted to offer my services again as an elected representative. I have always believed in public service. I served twelve years at the local level, then twelve years on the Oakland Community College Board. I've been involved in many community services. It's important for me to volunteer my time to help the community in any way I can. I believe I can provide strong leadership and initiatives to assure our public health and safety during the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic and a return to a healthy post-COVID economy. In closing, I'm asking for your support in this election. Voters should pick me because of my competence, my experience, and my commitment to serving all our citizens, all our families, all our neighborhoods, all our businesses, all our communities. I have demonstrated an unflagging determination that we have open, accountable, and accessible government. A county government that is truly responsive to the needs of our citizen. I believe I am best able to deal with crises like COVID nineteen, with the post-COVID economic recovery, and with the critical needs of our sheriff and police. If you have any questions or concerns about county government, about the county's response to COVID nineteen pandemic, or about my stance on issues, you can reach me on my cell phone, two four eight, two two seven, two four six two, or by email, P E K U H N at AOL dot com. For more information about this election, you can also go to the Oakland County Times website and view each candidate's video presentation. In addition, the League of Women Voters has had a forum for candidates, which is online. The League of Women Voters and the Troy Times have published candidate answers, questionnaires. And finally, you can go to my website, votetomkun.com. That's votetomkun.com. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. We want to thank both of you again for joining us this morning. We really appreciate it. Like I said before, it's extremely important this election year. And our job as a chamber is to help inform our members about who's running and on what platforms and what your experience and history and the issues that you'll tackle are going to be. So we really appreciate your time this morning. As a final word, I just want to point out, you see around my head here the names of eleven different businesses, and I would be remiss if I did not thank them. These are our eleven partners in the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce. And it's because of their significant support that they provide to the chamber that we're able to provide programs like this to our members at no cost. So with almost eight hundred members in our chamber, we appreciate their support of our business community in that way. So thank you once again to both of our candidates for joining us today. We will push this out through our YouTube channel and our e-newsletter as well so that we can help inform even more of our members and our community about both of you running for District Eleven. So thank you again. This concludes our program today. Have a great day. It's sunny out.